So now it's a date, see, but no.
Yeah, no, no, that's good.
So now I would trip down and I wouldn't do it after that, that's just me. I would do it.
Thank you very much, Diane. If you could read the notice, the first item on the docket and only item on the docket is 54 Broadway at 3654 Broadway.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 9th, 2025, on the petition of Rainbow Adult Daycare Center of Malden LLC on behalf of Mallway Realty Associates LP by its property manager, WS Development/WS Asset Management is known as fifty-four Broadway. The overall property contains a number of other businesses, as I'm sure the board is aware. They vary in nature. There's a supermarket down there, there's a self-storage facility, and the building in which the petitioner is seeking to open its business contains a number of varied uses, retail sales, recreational, and soon to be an educational use, having received a approval, a site plan review approval for an educational use in some space comprising a portion of that being rented by them. But this matter is for the adult daycare business it hopes to operate, which would be slightly less than twenty thousand square feet of approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet to be rented in that building, nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six square feet, to be exact. There'll be a tenant, they're going to completely renovate the interior of that space to accommodate their business if they are given the special permit to open, creating a number of rooms and areas within it that are ancillary and part of their mission as an adult daycare facility. They will provide recreational activities, they will provide offices for staff and for medical professionals, and many other things. I'll make a note right at the beginning that the materials before the board indicate that some portions of their space were intended to be used as massage and acupuncture rooms. These are parts of their overall therapeutic approach to care for elderly in the adult daycare facility. By the way, they operate eight other facilities currently, right now, they have, they're all called Rainbow, so this would be Rainbow Adult Daycare of Malden, if allowed to go forward. But they've got existing facilities in Alston, Brighton, Dorchester, Quincy, Waltham, Lynn, Needham. They're a well-established provider of this kind of service and this kind of facility for elders. They've identified a need for this kind of business in this community. I don't know if the board, or any members of the board may have seen it, but if you're out at a certain time of day here in Malden, you will see vans transporting people to and from facilities such as this. There are others located in nearby communities, Medford, Revere, et cetera. There's a need for this in Malden, that this petitioner has identified, they believe that this is, if allowed to go forward, they will be filling that need, they'll have a large space capable of holding ultimately up to as many as two hundred, what they refer to as particip- participants, clients, customers, but their term is participants, that they could help as many as two hundred people, if allowed to go forward, based on, based on the plans as presented for the special permit application. They do not anticipate, if allowed to go forward, if they receive the special permit, they will begin with that kind of volume. Naturally, they expect to build their business somewhat, but ultimately, they could service that many participants, if allowed to go forward. They intend to operate six days a week, Monday through Saturday. Their hours would be seven-thirty to four in the, every day, and this particular business and their particular business format is to not have the individuals who would be participants, who would tend to be obviously older folks, maybe people with mobility issues, maybe people with, with other medical issues, and these aren't the kind of clients, customers, or participants who would be driving themselves to this and then driving themselves back home at the end of the day. They would employ a fleet, a small fleet, of vans or shuttle buses that would go pick their participants up, bring them to the facility, and at the end of the day, return them to their homes. And that's, that's their business model, is to provide complete service, including going to pick up their clients, their participants, their customers, and bringing them home at the end of the day. As I said, there are, there's a certain medical component, given the nature of the, of the participants, often always elderly folks, sometimes elderly folks with certain medical needs. By state regulation, they're obligated to maintain a medical presence on-site, and in fact, they're obligated to have one registered nurse for every twenty-five clients. So there are always qualified medical personnel on-site to take care of any medical emergencies that may arise, more typically, simply to make sure that the participants are, you know, have, have qualified medical professionals there, whether it's assisting with maintaining their medication schedule or, or things like that. And again, that's a matter of state regulation, it's not a choice for them, it's an obligation imposed on them by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A traffic impact study was required, given the size of the building, the overall size of the building is, is very large, but as the board is aware, anything in excess of ten thousand square feet obligates the petitioner to have a traffic study done. One was done for this, and it was peer-reviewed by the city's chosen peer-review entity. Its conclusions, based on my review of it, were that this use, oh, and by the way, as I mentioned earlier, this, an affiliate of this petitioner has also received site plan approval for a educational use, educational facility for children on the autistic spectrum. Those two businesses are going to divide up the twenty-seven thousand square feet of space that the petitioner seeks to rent from the property owner, as I mentioned earlier, with a lion's share being devoted to this use, about twenty thousand square feet, and something in the range of sixty-nine hundred square feet being devoted to ABI, which is their, their educational facility for children on the autism spectrum. The traffic study that was done was conducted assuming that both uses were going to be taking place contemporaneously, and therefore gauged its study to address any concerns or issues that might result as a consequence of both of those businesses operating at that location at the same time. Ultimately, the traffic study confirmed that these uses were both considered low-impact, they weren't expected to generate much, if any adverse, traffic consequences to the site, and they weren't expected to generate any parking issues. There are something like seven hundred and forty-seven, I'm sorry, the, the actual number escapes me at the moment, but it gets somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred parking spaces available for the entire plaza. Of course, those spaces service all the businesses on there. But the conclusion of the traffic study was that, given that the people who would be coming and who would be participants in the business before the board right now, the adult daycare business, would be shuttled back and forth, that that would have a significant beneficial impact on parking, and that therefore, although zoning would require technically a very large amount of parking spaces, as you can see from the staff report's recommendation, that the conclusion of the traffic study, as well as that of the peer-review for the city, was that that number should come down, again, largely because of the fact that you're not going to have these participants, even if they do work their business level up to as many as two hundred, none of these people are going to be parking on-site because they'll all be arriving and leaving by van. So we believe and respectfully suggest to the board that parking and traffic issues are, are non-issues based on the low-impact and the specific nature of this business. The same study, however, did suggest and recommend a number of mitigation and improvements to the overall site, all of which are suggested recommendations in the staff report. The client, the petitioner, has had an opportunity to go over it, as well as the property owner, whose representative is here tonight and, and who will address the board after I finish my presentation. But in general, those suggested conditions in the nature of improvements or mitigations related to traffic and parking are certainly all acceptable to the petitioner, they're, they're modest in nature, and the petitioner certainly doesn't mind them. However, the petitioner is not really the person or the entity that's going to have to deal with them, that would be the property owner. There may be some adjustment between the parties based on their contractual relationship as landlord and tenant, but ultimately, the things that are being asked for and, and are being proposed as potential conditions on any grant of the special permit are things that this petitioner does not object to and has no problem with, but ultimately, would have to defer it to the property owner in terms of them probably being accomplished. They can't go out and begin making changes to this overall parking area as a mere tenant there among a great many others. But I don't believe that those issues, those are issues with respect to the property owner, but I'll defer it to the property owner's representative when she has an opportunity to address the board on that. But for purposes of my client, the petitioner, those specific conditions are acknowledged and, and accepted, to the extent that the board is inclined at some point, or would be inclined at some point, to grant the special permit. With respect to the legal standard that the board must consider ultimately, if it's to grant this special permit, I would respectfully suggest that this particular petitioner meets each and every aspect of the legal standard. Based on the staff report, this use and the proposed changes to the interior of the unit that they're renting will not increase or create or increase any dimensional control violations. There are a number of pre-existing dimensional control violations with this building and with the property in general, but nothing that this petitioner is going to do is going to increase or enlarge or create new ones in that respect. And as I previously mentioned moments ago, with respect to parking, our position is that the, the peer-review, very thorough, traffic impact study, as well as the peer-review, coupled with those proposed mitigation efforts, would result in no, parking creating no detrimental effects for the neighborhood in general. Similarly, given that the basis, the basis for the business model of this particular petitioner, that being that the participants to its business are transported to and from the site by shuttle buses/ vans that are utilized by the petitioner, this is not going to create traffic patterns or safety hazards in the neighborhood or in the surrounding area because of the significantly, you know, significantly minimal amount of traffic associated with it. When you're gathering up many of these participants in a single van, you don't have more than a couple of vans at any given time coming in. Also, they are pursuant to their lease with the property owner, they will have spaces on-site, they'll be behind the building, out of, out of sight, so to speak, behind the main building, that are exclusively reserved to them for parking their vans. So even those are going to be out of the way, so to speak, and not be taking up spaces in the greater parking area utilized by the majority of the other occupants or tenants in the plaza. To the extent that they're required, or a special permit requires them not to do anything more detrimental to the neighborhood, we'd suggest, again, with respect, that this is a low-impact use. Daycare for senior citizens is not the kind of use that creates problems for any neighborhood as a practical matter, at least in terms of the use itself. Again, traffic and parking can always be issues, but as moment, moments ago addressed, we don't think those apply here, and that therefore, it, it can't reasonably said that creating a, a needed environment for local elderly folks to have a daycare facility nearby somehow is a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. Finally, it doesn't particularly conflict with any other uses within there. Again, this is a very varied plaza with many different kinds of uses, ranging, again, from the supermarket to a storage facility, to recreational use, to restaurant use. There's nothing inherently contradictory with there being a facility like this in there as well. And finally, to the extent that we believe this meets the final criteria, which is in the public good, as I said, this is a, this is a use that I, I think that, that the board would recognize as something that is beneficial to the city. As I mentioned, I, I think anybody who drives around Malden, again, at a certain time of day, early morning or early afternoon, you're going to see vans transporting Malden residents to and from places like this, because there aren't many. I believe there's one on Commercial Street, maybe a second one, but there's not enough. That's why these folks have come in here looking to rent their spaces, again, they've identified a need in this area, and they are looking to fill it, they're an established entity that, that runs facilities like this, that already has eight up and running, and they're a net, a, a great net positive. So we feel that we've met the criteria for the special permit. I have with me Mr. Paul Rayev, he's a principal of the business, he's available to discuss and answer any questions, to the extent the board, the board often has nuts-and-bolts kind of questions about it. Also, as I said, there is the representative from the property owner, Ms. Katie Campion, who's more than happy to address the board. In fact, if I could invite her up right now, she may have something in the nature of a presentation she'd like to make, if that's all right with the board.
Counselor, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, before, before we do that. So you said there'd be two hundred participants?
That is the maximum capacity of the facility, if allowed to go forward. Mr. Rayev does not anticipate having that kind of volume of customer business initially. It would take years probably to reach that, if reached at all, but it could accommodate as many as two hundred participants at any given time.
What, do you, okay, maybe this might be a question for him. What's the average participation in your several other locations?
I'll, I'll ask him to address that, Chairman.
Yes, and, and anyone who comes up to the podium, please give us your name and residential address for the record, and please sign the clipboard.
Members of the board, my name is Paul Rayev, one eighteen Stony Lee Road, Dedham, Massachusetts. I represent Rainbow Adult Daycare. So your questions, what's our average in our other facilities?
Yes, and especially, particularly for this one, what, what do you think your initial participation rate will be, and how, how long will it take you to get up to two hundred?
So we, we have a different size facility, some facilities, like for eighty, for eighty participants, we have a largest facility, probably close to a hundred ninety-five people in Bedford and City of Quincy. It took like years, probably five to six years to get to the full capacity. Usually, it takes, we usually start probably twenty-five people, and within a year, we hope to get like to sixty to seventy participants a day, and then slowly, we, if we provide good services and program become popular, we can, we can slowly increase the number of participants a day. An average, we probably would say we have our programs like a hundred fifteen, hundred twenty participants a day.
How many staff do you anticipate having?
Initially, we anticipate probably fifteen to eighteen staff members, and then number of staff members, it depends on number of participants. We required by state regulations to have one nurse for every twenty-five participants, and one to twelve ratio for direct care, including the nurses. Our largest facility, thirty-five to thirty-eight staff members a day, smaller facility between twenty-two to twenty-eight people a day, staff members.
Okay, and how far away do you anticipate drawing the participants?
One more time?
How far away? What radius from the facility do you believe you'll be trucking people in?
Well, I'd rest people who resides in City of Malden, Bedford, Revere, Arlington, like neighboring, neighboring towns. We usually try not to go like more than fifteen to twenty minutes, like ride buses for participants. Nobody wants to be spending a lot of time riding in a bus.
Okay, and what, so you're gonna be parking in the rear?
Correct.
So that'd be the pickup and drop-off, and they'll enter through the back of the facility?
No, for pickup and drop-off, we're gonna have designated six parking spots, in the morning and afternoon, it's gonna be actually in the front of a facility.
In the front, okay, that's what I thought I read in the traffic report, but when Counselor McDonald was talking, I thought he said it was gonna be in the back.
At night, we're gonna keep our vans at night, in the back of the building, and during the day, we're gonna try to keep most our vans in the back as well. And then we're gonna bring them up front if we need to pick up and drop off during pickup and drop-off times.
How, how big are these vans, eight to ten people?
It's usually twelve-passenger vans.
Twelve-passenger van, okay, thanks. 12-passenger van, okay, thanks. When, when the participants enter the facility at 7:30 in the morning, do they stay within the facility for the whole day till 4:00 in the afternoon?
Participants usually spend five to six hours inside of, inside of facility. They, we do provide some community outings as well, we take participants to medical appointments, we take participants to some community engagements, to local parks, and for some recreational activity. But most of the time, like 80% of the participants stays during the whole day inside of a building, and 20% will get engaged as a medical appointment or some community engagements.
Okay, let me ask you a question. How long would you expect the build-out to be?
At least six months.
At least six months, and that's just for the adult portion? How does the children's portion fit into it? Is that in the same build-out period?
Same build-out period.
And then once it's built out, then you separate, you don't have any interaction?
No interactions, completely separate businesses, not related to each other. We anticipate same general contractor doing build-out for both facility, but after they open, it runs by different group, completely different, one for seniors and one for younger children.
Okay, and when you host an outing, is it volunteer basis, or would you be, let's say you have 70 people there, if you hosted an outing, would you then be trying to move 70 people all at once, or how does that work?
What I mean, when we do like a community outing-
Let's say you go into a park someplace, and you've got 70 people at the facility that day, 70 participants at the facility that day. How do you coordinate getting them in a crowded parking lot, load it up into the vans?
So usually, it's not 70 people who's going for outings, you know, like a lot, most of our participants stays the whole day. An average, if it's outing, say, like medical appointments, it could be like two, three people, they will be going in a separate van.
Okay.
Going to the park, it could be like eight people to 10 people sign up, we have a sign-up list. And then program aid and driver will, will be guided these people to the van, under supervision, we load them up, and then they'll go for their activity, same things when they come back, under supervision, we unload the vans, we always make sure the safety of our participants, and it's, system worked really, really well for the last 20 years.
Okay, no, and the reason why I ask is, I went by the site a few times, and the area right in front of your proposed location was pretty crowded in the parking lot most of the time, and I was just trying to envision how many people would be going out into the parking lot at one time, and taking some time to load up into the vans, and then move them out, and coordinating the logistics of all that.
And we are planning to build a ramp in the rear of a building as well, so we're gonna, we're gonna have ability during the day also to use rear entrance. It's much more difficult in the morning when it's a lot of participants comes in, that's why we wanna use like entrance in the front, and it's usually 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, it's not really busy time at the plaza. But during the daytime, if we have to use a rear entrance, which is we used in the previous facility, we can do it as well. I mean, sometimes, most participants don't like to use the ramp if they can just go straight, but we'll see how it's gonna work in this location if we get approved.
I have one other question about trash removal. Can you explain your trash removal system? What do you plan on having a dumpster? When I drove in the back, there were, there was a lot of trash out around, but also, there seemed to be several individual stables for everyone's trash or dumpster. Do you know which ones assigned to you?
I don't think any of those still assigned to us. We should have a private assigned recycling trash bin and, and one for a trash. We usually sign contracts with a trash-removing company, and trash pickup in the busy locations probably every other day, and recycling every other week. We also like to keep locations nice and clean, we pack everything in the bags, and we adjust our trash pickup schedule accordingly how busy the locations are.
How much trash are you generating? If you're, you're providing food service on site, right? And you'll be generating some medical waste from the nurses' offices, four nurses' offices?
Medical waste don't go to the trash. Medical waste usually gets picked up by medical waste company, and it's on a monthly or needed basis. We don't usually get a lot of medical waste, but it cannot go to the trash.
But that'll be part of your trash removal program, you'll have a portion that you'll contract with a medical waste removal company, and then a recycling company, and then a trash company?
And the medical waste is a separate contract, and we usually keep medical waste locked till it's inside of the building, till it gets picked up by medical waste company.
Have you seen the staff report? Have you seen the staff report from the planning staff? On the plan, you had, I think it was four massage rooms and two acupuncture rooms. By the definition of our zoning, those aren't allowed in an adult daycare. Will that be a, a problem for your operation?
I mean, we usually have this services in most of our centers, but it's not gonna be a problem. We can, we do a lot of different recreational and medical services for our clients, and we're not gonna provide the services in these locations if it's not allowed by zoning.
Okay. And the last one, and then if anyone else has any other questions, or if you want to proceed, because I know I interrupted Attorney McDonald with the, through these questions. But, no, I lost it. Referencing Attorney McDonald, I lost the question I had, but there was just one other question I had, and then when it comes back to me, I'll, I'll ask again.
If, if other board members have other questions, we're happy to try to answer them, but Chairman, if not, or if they're willing to defer, I would like to bring the property owner's representative up.
Okay, let me see, Stephanie Stone has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am wondering too about the location of this particular facility being in that plaza, you know, with a lot of businesses around and a lot of cars, and the, the lane, the drive-through lane is between the door, the front door, and the parking spots. So I'm curious about particular safety considerations around that. Do you have other facilities that are in a location like this, in a unique sort of way where it's nestled in a, in a lot of other businesses and a lot of traffic?
We don't have a location that in exactly the same plaza, but we have a location that's surrounded by another businesses, which is actually have a much more difficult, like a traffic condition. And what usually helps us, the way we operate, it's, it's a lot of support from our staff. I mean, we have a lot of program aides, nurses, and everybody get involved when it's a time to unload clients and, or when clients go home. So we create a lot of safety nets. We got, I mean, we haven't had any single accident on any of our parking lots. I mean, except like our vans got hit by other cars and being parked, but this is it. Nobody ever got like hit by, any of our participants got involved in any accidents. We, safety is our number one priority, so we really take care of our clients. They, we don't allow them to walk by themselves without any supervision. We have always extra hands and extra eyes to control the traffic and prevent accidents. As I mentioned before, it's kind of slow times on the plazas, like 8:00 in the morning, 7:30 in the morning, usually most of the businesses are still closed. In the afternoon, 2:30, 2:30 in the afternoon, it's also not a really peak time, so it's kind of after lunch, but things getting slowed down, so it helps us a lot to be cautious and to be, stay safe.
Yeah, and you were talking about the participants having supervision, so is, are they locked in essentially, so they can't? I mean, could, how easily could they get out?
No, no, they can't. Some of them just, I mean, when people age, you know, like some of them has a physical demand, they need help also to step out from the vans, we don't want any accidents happen. Some, most of them can walk on its own, but some of them require assistance. So we, we know our participants, we know who required more assistance, who required less, meaning supervision, we're not literally working them, but we have the staff members outside, who is in charge of unloading, and who is in charge of make sure the traffic condition is appropriate.
Right, and, and just in terms of the front door, I don't, I don't mean to be, I don't, I don't know the patient or the person's participant population, but in terms of, you know, just walking out the front door, could they do that?
What, what I mean?
They, if they're inside the facility and they just walk out the door, is that very monitored?
No, actually, they can't. I mean, we always have all exits, it's, it's not, it's not locked-down facility, but we're responsible for our participants when they are not in, in our facility. So they cannot just walk out and just wander around. Front door, we always have a front desk, at least two people in the front desk who monitor the front door. The back door, we also assign people to monitor the back door, and they have alarms installed in the back door. So if a door gets opened, we know somebody opens the door. Can you, if you have a question, can people elope from facility as emergency? Yeah, things can happen like this, but we usually install like cameras, supervision on the front doors, so we, we wanna know where are our participants during the day. We don't want, we don't want any surprises.
Right, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm familiar with, you know, child daycares, which I assume can be, or maybe are mandated to be slightly different because there are children versus adults. I was wondering too, in terms of traffic and signage, I mean, you know how you have in the crosswalks, there are, you know, certain flashing light mechanisms or signs that say, you know, seniors or people with disabilities, is there any possibility to do something like that in this area?
I, been, I, we never looked into any, into any of this advices. I mean, there is a definitely crosswalks, and with, as I mentioned before, none of our participants expected to walk by themselves outside of facility and just wandering on the parking lots, and, and if we do the outings, it's an organized matter, it's always under supervision, and we assign multiple, depends on how many people in the group, assign appropriate number of staff members to supervise any type of outings. But we can, we can look into some of this stuff, but when they did a traffic study, they didn't find any, anything extraordinary with this plaza.
Right, yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking about in terms of their own safety, that, that you wouldn't be monitoring them, but, you know, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of busy areas in the area.
You all set, Stephanie?
Yep.
Thank you. Ken Ettenucci.
Yeah, so will the drop-off, I mean, I think you mentioned that the vans would be on the park, in the parking spots, or would there be any drop-off and pickup right at the curb, or no?
I don't think we're gonna be doing pickup and drop-off on the curb because it's a fire lane.
Right.
So we're not expecting to do it at the curb.
Right, so they're gonna-
It's gonna be, I believe, six closest parking spots right in the front of this facility, but not in the curb.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. It's, it's too bad they couldn't have to pull up right, queue up on the sidewalk and just get right into the vans.
It would be nice.
But yeah, you're right, it is a, it is a fire, fire lane there. In, are all the clients going to be bussed in, or is there a drop-off option as well, or does everybody have to be bussed in?
I mean, we probably less than 1% of our clients get dropped, dropped off by family members, but it's, most of the time, it's like an emergency, if they miss the bus or they had a morning medical appointment, and they still wanna be, participate in the rest of the day, then it can be dropped, dropped off by the family member. But 99% of the time is pickup and drop-off by our own transportation.
Okay, is there any medical limitations or anything to the clients? I mean, you know, either physical or cognitive?
It could be, it could be. We serve different type of needs of a client. Some clients are better physical shapes than others. We have a dementia program inside of our, of our facilities. We help clients who's in wheelchair-bound, so we, we say no to anyone, you know, like, I mean, if we can take care of them, we provide services.
Okay.
If, if they, if they need assistance, we'll provide the extra assistance.
Then language assistance too?
Language assistance.
Because it's no, it's no, it's not a specific group, it's, it's open to everybody?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Michelle Ferguson. Oh, I'm sorry, Tuadich and Michelle Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the age group about, like, the participant?
It starts from 65 years old. 99% 65-plus, we have a small group of participants, probably between age 60 to 65, if they have some physical limitation, and get approved to the program. But most of our clients, I would say, like 75 to 80 years old.
Okay, thank you. My other question would be, if the participant has like a PCA, a helper, do you guys allow to come with the PCA, or the participant has to come by themselves?
By themselves.
So you guys don't allow?
No, we usually don't allow personal care assistant to be inside of a facility. We have plenty of a program aides and the staff accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tuadich and Michelle Ferguson.
I just have a question going back to where you said the drop-off time would be like 7:30 in the morning, and pickup would be about 2:00, 2:30. And you had mentioned that it's not heavy traffic times. There is a high school right over there, and I know there's different ways to go into that high school, but coming from someone that grew up in that area, I always use that parking lot to cut through. Are you concerned about that, like parents, or even, it's a high school, so you have the high school kids going through that parking lot at like 2:30, or in the mornings on their way to school?
Not really, because even, I've seen cars going through the plazas, actually going through like a north exit, they don't usually drive across this, like this stretch.
Right, they like won't go that, but they like-
They usually go like on the side, and I've seen the school on the back. So when I looked in the plaza initially, I looked in the school, and we actually have another location right next to the school in, like, in the, in building in Framingham, and it's a, and it's, and it's not a problem, you know, like, I mean, we always have people outside, you know, like, so it's, I, can, can 16-years-old rushing through the school cause some damage? I mean, it can cause damage anywhere, I don't know, like, I mean, but should, should they drive like nuts through the plaza? Probably not, right? And I hope they don't.
You hope that they don't, yeah.
Yeah, I mean- I mean.
And then can I just ask one other question? We've been talking a lot about the adults, the daycare center in, with the drop off in the vans. What's the plan for like the younger kids, for the kids that are going to be going to the elementary style? What's the drop off pickup plan there?
It's a, it's a drop off and pickup by the parents.
Okay. So they'll have to be parking, separate parking, right? Because, or would they be allowed to use those six parking spots you have marked up?
Yeah, they can park on the plaza. Parents don't stay in the facility. So usually, parents pick up, they park, they take the kids out, they bring them to the facility, and then they leave. So it's, they don't spend more than five, seven minutes on the parking spots.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone else who has any questions? Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. What type of medical license or what type of license? You were mentioning state regs and requirements. What exactly is the license that you need for this facility?
It's licensed by Department of Public Health. It's a license to operate Adult Daycare Health Center in Massachusetts.
License for?
Adult Daycare Health Center.
Oh, that's what it's called?
Yes.
Adult Daycare Health Center?
Yeah.
Okay. And what is, you mentioned that the, the educational program is an affiliate business. What's the affiliation? Because I was at the meeting where the city granted the site plan and you were also the representative for that. So what is the connection? If you could, and could you put the mic up top too, because I'm having a hard time hearing you? Put it on top of the, please, thank you, just so we can hear you clearer. Thank you.
Affiliation, some of their ownership is the same. But management is completely different. Adult Daycare Health Center managed by a company who just take care of the Adult Daycare Health Center site and Center for Autism Spectrum Disorder for Kids, managed by their own management company. So just ownership, some owners are the same.
Okay, so you're, you're part of both of them?
Yes, I am.
Okay. But, so who then, so you're not part of the management of this adult daycare?
I'm a part of management for Adult Daycare, but I'm not part of the management for Autism Spectrum Disorder Kids Centers.
Okay, so you're part, so you represent the owner and the manager for the Adult Day Health Center?
Correct.
Are you personally at the site or?
Yes, I am.
This site or how, how does it work? Do you get assigned to different sites or?
So each site, by regulation, should have a program director, separate program director. So each site will have, like this site will have an own program director. I'm at the site, but I'm not there every single day. I go from different sites to sites.
Okay, so you're not the program director, that you're there? Okay. So you would be visiting this and the other eight, the other seven sites?
Correct.
The Adult Day Health, okay, thank you. And then how many vans are there?
It depends on the size of a program. Like a largest program can have up to, I would say fifteen vans.
But how many for this, we, how many for this site?
We'll start with four vans.
Four?
Four. And it really depends how many participants we have.
Okay.
And it depends on the routes as well. If the routes are closed, sometimes we can get away with eight to nine vans. If we need to, some sites when we need to drive to Boston can have a little bit more difficult traffic condition, can have like a dozen vans.
Okay, so this site will start with four. And what, if, if it was at maximum capacity, how many vans you think you'd need?
Fourteen to fifteen.
Okay, so four to fourteen to fifteen. Okay. And in terms of the staff, you, you were mentioning other facilities, but for this facility, how many will you start with and how many would the maximum be?
We'll start with twelve to fifteen people. And maximum, my guess, like thirty-five to thirty-seven.
Okay. And does that include everybody, the nurses, the directors, the janitor, the front desk person? Does that include the drivers?
Correct.
Every, everybody that's assigned to that? Okay.
Because drivers, not just the drivers, they program aides.
Okay, I was going to ask if they come in as well.
Yeah. We, we don't have just the drivers. They do routes in the morning and afternoon. During the days of work as a program aide inside of the program.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question just has to do with this ramp out back. You know that whole corridor is, seems to be used for the U-Haul? Truck rentals that go along with that self-storage facility. So how is, and the spaces are already numbered, right? Looks like they're numbered for the U-Haul rental. They have like AA, BB, CC, they all seem to go with the self-storage. So how is, do you think you're going to be assigned spaces back there? Or how will that, how do you think that's going to work?
When, we should be assigned the spaces in the back and to park the van during the day and park the van overnight. We already talked to landlord and they're going to find appropriate spots for our vans to be there.
Okay, and so you think you might need as many as fifteen spaces?
At some point.
Okay. And you said they're going to stay overnight too? The vans will stay overnight. Okay. All right, great, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions? If not, thank you, sir. Counselor, if you were going to bring up the owner represent.
I think it would be helpful to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could just give us your name and residential address and sign the clipboard after. Thank you.
My name is Katie Campion. I'm Vice President of Asset Strategy and Development for WS Development. Residential address is nineteen Riverview Road, Framingham, Massachusetts. WS Development is the owner and manager of Broadway Plaza as well as Townline Plaza. So we work on both properties in Malden and work very closely with the city and all things related to that. We've been working with both the city as well as the tenant to really, we're really excited about bringing this use to Malden. As they said, there's a really great need for it. People are traveling across Malden to get to different types of facilities and it's nice to be able to bring this into Malden and we're happy to support that. We are, like I said, the owners and managers of this property and we take that very seriously. We've worked with them on some recommendations that the staff has already had from the peer reports about how to address safety and traffic concerns. Hearing that there were a couple more, we'd be definitely happy to add additional pedestrian crossing signs in front of the building, those neon ones that kind of go right in the middle. Those serve two purposes. One, highlighting that there are pedestrians crossing there too. And by breaking up the driveline and actually discourages a little bit of that cut through. The property, as mentioned, is a little bit of a cut through. Every year we try and do more and more to discourage that. We have, I think, some of the biggest speed bumps in the city. And nicely, when the property is full, you can't go around the speed bumps. I do think having these users here in the morning, people are going to start getting used to not cutting through the property as much anywhere anymore. Already with the gym being open in the past year, we're seeing that die down as well. We also have a great relationship with our butters, the principal of Malden Catholic. We have them on speed dial, so if there are issues with the school, sometimes we've had students parking there when they shouldn't be. We have that open dialogue and so we could definitely work with them. We also have a great partnership with the city, the ballpark that's right adjacent. We've granted some parking and initially granted the land for some of that field as well. And so we definitely want to be a partner with both the city of Malden and the tenant to help bring this in. Happy to answer any property questions if you'd like.
Yes, have you seen the staff report?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Can you represent that the ownership team will incorporate the traffic mitigation that's suggested? Specifically, I believe it's updating the ADA compliance on the north and south entrance?
Yeah, we're happy to comply with everything that was suggested. We just want to make some clarifications because some of the recommendations are not on our land. So we'd have to coordinate with the city on anything that's on their land. So we just want to say, you know, with coordination with the city, with city approval, but we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, but there wasn't anything that you were opposed to?
No.
Okay, no, that's good. I, I do have to raise it, when I, when I went by, the back, behind the building
The trash.
was a mess with the trash and the seagulls and the food all around and things like that. What, do you have a program that you monitor that or?
Yeah, so unfortunately, Michelle had actually suggested this and was correct. Some of our tenants use Republic and so they were hit by the recent strike. Republic is now starting to catch up on that trash hauling. They're not able to resume regular service until next week, but they are dropping off additional dumpsters tomorrow morning. I'd be happy to share pictures with Michelle once that's complete. So that is why this was really bad this week, unfortunately. We also are working to update all the dumpster enclosures. They do get a little beat up, so it's something we try and monitor. But that is in our program for this year to rebuild, fix, redo all the dumpster enclosures.
Okay, now that's, that's encouraging to hear with regard to that. Because I did notice some waste management dumpsters out there, but there were a few Republic.
Yeah.
And then there was somewhere that people just seemed to be throwing out trash bags
Yeah, we do.
in the dumpster enclosure.
Yeah. Each tenant is responsible for individually contracting with their own trash. We give them the location on site and the enclosure and then they coordinate with the company. That way we don't have to be the middle person. It works really well for shopping centers like this. And then, you know, we try, we have people that are onsite every week. We have overnight security that's there every night and we try and monitor as best we can and make sure people are enforcing it and we send tenants notices when we see that they're not. We definitely always encourage if anybody else sees something to let us know as well. And then we do have a little bit of a problem with illegal dumping on property that we're trying to work through. For some reason, people like dropping mattresses, bathtubs, that type of stuff. I do think some additional activity in the back will help with that. But we do have a country, a company contracted for when that does happen, we call them and they come and pick it up.
Right. Can you speak to the U-Haul facility at all? I was under the impression that was a self-storage unit, but there were a number of trailers and U-Haul trucks and things like that along the back. Are those all assigned parking spots or are they just using open spots?
Currently, they are assigned. They have, it is a four-story self-storage facility. They've expanded their rental car, rental truck program over the years. We kind of evaluate it every couple of years and see how much availability there is on site for that additional parking. And right now with the vacancy that we had, there was additional parking in excess that they could use. But we monitor parking and as uses come in, the property fills up. We work with them to reduce that as needed.
Okay. Do you see a problem with accommodating the petitioner? I imagine, when I was there, as Michelle said, a number of the, the lanes were designated AA, BB, CC. Those seem to be pretty much open. But do you see a problem with meeting the needs of the petitioner? If he starts off with four vans and then gradually creeps up as his business gets more stable?
We don't see a problem with it. I think the ramp up will give us time to work out the kinks as there is with any new operation. We also have additional parking that's immediately adjacent to the building. So the U-Haul ones, there actually, some of them are tandem parking spaces. So we actively manage the parking and would work with both the tenant and U-Haul and other employees of the shopping center as well. We like to have the employees park in those areas to make sure that there is proximate parking available for everybody. The previous document was a furniture store. So there was a loading area and some infrastructure and a big compactor that's not going to be used anymore. So that will help free up some space as well.
Will the compactor be removed?
I'm pretty sure the plan is to remove the compactor. Yeah.
Okay, no, because I saw the compactor, but it looked like the door was broken and, or, or removed.
Yep.
And I wasn't sure, but it looked like it was coming right out of the space.
Yep. Well, we kind of wait until tenants under construction to clear out some of the site infrastructure and we'd be happy to submit an updated plan that shows that removed as well.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for the property manager? No, Michelle, do you have any? Go ahead.
Yes, I had a question about the snow storage. So the snow storage, and I'm referring to the plan that you submitted, which is a version of the survey plan that you added some of the information that's required in any application. You added it to this plan because it wasn't all on the plan. Some of it was and you just couldn't, I would say I couldn't see it. So some of it you highlighted or colorized, I should say. But some of it you added the aisle widths and things like that. But the snow storage, all the snow storage that you're showing is in parking spaces. So it also, so I had a question about that, since that isn't actually allowed under our zoning because it displaces the parking. But I also had a question because you're even using that, you really only have like less half or less than half of what's required if you had to plow snow from all the spaces, which is what the snow storage requirement is. Space to store snow that's plowed out of the spaces. So what, what do you, what do you do for snow storage? Is this, is this, how does it work? Do, is there another plan or is it someplace else or?
Yeah, so what we've drawn on the plan is what we've been doing historically for years for snow storage on property. Knock on wood. Usually we don't get heavy snowfalls until after the holiday season. January and actually historically February and March are the snowiest seasons. Not in the holiday shopping season, November, December, which is when there's the biggest demand for parking spaces. So of all the crazy things we deal with in retail, snow and holiday shopping actually usually is very synergistic. And so we're able to take up a little more parking in what are the slower retail months of January through March. And this is how we've been managing the snow for years. When we do have those, you know, like twenty fifteen, the astronomical years where it snowed every single Sunday, Monday, and we got feet of snow, we do move them to these areas on site. And then we will do off-site hauling as well if we need to. That's coordinated as needed. We contract with a snow company every year. It's up to them to coordinate where they're going to haul the snow. But that's part of the contract we have with them, that if we reach a certain amount, if we need additional parking available, then we call them up and they start hauling snow. If our customers can't park on the property, that's our biggest problem. If people, you know, in Malden, there's a lot of places people can shop. We want Broadway Plaza to be the place they want to go. So we take the snow storage and snow removal very seriously.
Okay, thanks. And you, would you be able to, and I think one of your emails referenced providing a plan. Would you be able to update the actual survey plan or have the surveyor updated? I know you, you put in a lot of this. I wasn't sure if it was on the plan and I just couldn't read it because it really was a grainier version. But then I realized a lot of it wasn't on the plan. But would you be able to have the plan updated to, as opposed to? And I appreciate, somebody, I guess in your office, just put some of this on the plan.
Yep, yeah, there was some highlighting.
Yeah, so would, would you be able to do that?
Yes, we'd be able to contract with a survey company to go out, add the, all the information that's required to the plan as well as I think it'd be really great to clarify the conditions that we're agreeing to and make sure they're shown appropriately on the plan, where the crosswalks are going to be striped, where the stop bars are going to be added, stop signs and things like that. We'll just need a little bit of time for them to go out, physically survey, mark everything up and coordinate with you. But yes, absolutely willing to do that.
Okay, so, so this would be an update of this ASBIL plan? And on that note, what is the, the parking that's shown on this plan? Doesn't seem to match the number. So what is, are you, do, do, are you confident with the number that you're providing? Or what, are you counting the truck parking maybe twice, those tandem spots in the back?
Yes.
Which aren't actually shown as tandem. They just look like a row of parking down the center. But I was curious because there's a difference in what's actually shown in the number you're telling us is on. So do you have any info about that?
Yeah, we did notice, the previous surveyor actually didn't label every parking spot. So we went through and physically counted a lot of the parking spaces and came up with a different total than the number listed. But that is something that we would clarify with the survey is, you know, they'll be responsible. They'll be stamping this drawing and saying, these are the number of parking spaces. But we do feel confident that we're within ten to But we do feel confident that we're within 10 to 20 spaces of what has been discussed today. And we also stripe every year, and we're about to do that as well. Um, so then we'll feel extra confident.
You stripe, you re-stripe every year?
We do, yep.
Okay.
We might not have every year during COVID, but now we do every year.
And do you know when it was last paved?
Um, we pave in different phases, but I think the largest phase was done, um, shortly after this plan was completed in 2017.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. No other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I did recall the question I was going to ask, uh, Counselor. There, there seems to be a number of participants that'll be attending. With regard to breakfast or lunch, do you, what, what's served? Is it breakfast is served, lunch is served? Um, is it prepared foods that are brought in, or are people out in the back on a grill?
I don't think anyone's grilling out in the back, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, Mr. Ray, uh, I think he's far more equipped to.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
We provide, uh, three meals a day, uh, breakfast, uh, snack, and lunch. Uh, breakfast, usually prepared on site. It's a very simple, like boiled eggs and, like a porridge and, uh, like bread or sandwich. Uh, snack, it's packaged, uh, packaged snacks, there's crackers. And lunch, either prepared on site, depends if they have a kitchen facility large enough, or it can be catered, or it's alternate. Uh, because participants like different type of foods, so we can, we can alternate either prepare on site or, or do catering contract and it's get delivered.
Okay, and that, and that's part of what my question was. I saw all the tables and seats.
Yes.
And the kitchen that was shown in the upper left-hand corner
Yes.
looked to be kind of small for that number of, uh, participants. And I was just curious if you're just passing out prepackaged meals, or if you're actually cooking to order, or doing some sort of cafeteria style?
Uh, no, we actually, uh, depends on the site. On this site, uh, we're gonna prepare breakfast and, uh, probably gonna do some catering contracts, uh, to deliver lunches.
Okay.
And it's a hot, it's a hot, it's a hot lunch, and it's also like regulated what we need to serve our participants. We, uh, we have to follow strict guidelines on di- dietary needs. They, all our menu gets approved by a dietitian every month, and we get audited what we prepare to our participants.
Okay, um, it's something that just popped into my head. The participants, do they pay for this out of pocket, or is there a, uh, link to some sort of insurance?
It's usually.
Medicare or Medicaid or?
It's usually paid by Medicaid, uh, type of a program or SQUAD type of programs. They don't pay, uh, we do, we probably have a small percentage of participants that's private pay. Uh, but most of our participants paid by insurance company or Medicaid.
Okay, now I was just curious about that on, uh, because it sounds like you're providing a lot of services for these people, and I was just curious how that was, uh, being funded. Okay, thank you. Any, one, have any other questions for the petitioner? The petitioner's attorney? And, uh, the owner rep, no? Uh, Counselor, do you have anything else that you'd like to add, or?
Uh, no, I just wanted to state, we're very happy to work at the City of Malden. Um, just reiterate that anything that we're, we are agreeing to the conditions that are related to the property and the site improvements, we just want to clarify when we get to them. Anything that's not on our land and on city land, we'll have to coordinate with the city.
Yeah, no, that's understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have nothing further for the board, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor. Thank you all very much for the presentation. And at this point, we'd like to entertain anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone who would like to speak in favor, feel free to come up to the podium, sign the, uh, clipboard and state your name and address for the record. Yes, Michelle? Um, seeing no one, um, Diane, do you have anything to read in favor? If you could, thank you.
This is from Steve Winslow, sent Wednesday, July 9th, 2025, to Michelle Romero regarding 54 Broadway, permit CMID 071868-2025. Yes, I am, and should I start from the other way?
Yeah, there's two, two emails, you could start with either one, just two sections there.
Okay, just, I'll just, it says, yes, I am fully in favor of the proposal. There's a large need for this type of service. Many of my constituents actually go to a similar facility in Medford. This project will help serve our seniors, reduce transportation across Malden, and create jobs here in Malden, too. Here are my comments. That the bicycle parking be distrib- um, distributed with one U-bicycle rack near the entrance of each business in the plaza, six inverted U-racks that accommodate 12 bikes. That the developer agrees to allow the city to install a blue bike station serving up to 12 bicycles on the property at date yet to be determined, to be installed and operated at the city's cost. Comment number 11, I would clarify that the top line should be before the crosswalk. Comment number 12, from Google Earth, the trash last recycling bin seems to be part of the city bind program. You may want to check with Kevin Duffy. It would make sense to move it closer to the bus stop. My own thought is that with the parking relief requested and the need for shoppers to have a proper shelter, we should require them to provide land for an inset bus stop and shelter at this location when Broadway gets reconstructed. Comment number 13, certainly a sensible request. One huge problem with this parking lot is that there is not, there is not walkway to and from Broadway. There's not route from the plaza to the 99 Market, and then no walkable route from the 99 Market to the bus stop. I heard this has come up on social media. Please find a catched updated report recommendation with revised conditions 11, 12, and 13. Please contact me with any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Diane, anything else you have to read?
Nope, that's it.
Very good, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no one that would like to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Uh, is there anything just in general to read?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is an email dated July 9th, 2025. It's a response to an email that I had sent to the health inspectors regarding the trash that I had observed during the site visit, being stored outside of dumpsters behind the building, the 3654 building, and also storage behind the supermarket. So this is the response. Um, it reads, it's from Peter Finn, who's one of the health inspectors for the city. It reads, "Good afternoon, thank you for bringing this to my attention. I went by there this afternoon. The most serious issues appear to be caused by flaming grill buffet. I spoke to the staff working there and informed them that the condition of the trash storage area was unacceptable and instructed them to begin cleaning the area immediately. I will follow up with an order to correct to the business owner. They will have 24 hours from receipt of my order to remove and properly dispose of all garbage refuse and rubbish in their trash area. I will also order them to maintain the trash area free from accumulations of garbage refuse and rubbish at all times. I will send an order to correct, to crunch, to crunch fitness for their dumpster as well. I will investigate the storage area behind the supermarket to determine if any violations exist. Thank you, Peter Finn, Health Inspector, Inspeccial Service Department, City of Malden." So the food, uh, the flaming grill buffet, in the pictures, you can see those are the dumpsters that are up against the building. There's, uh, another picture in there of a standalone dumpster, that's the crunch fitness dumpster. And then there's a photo as well of the storage area in the back corner of the supermarket. Not where their dumpster is, this seems to be another type of storage area. Um, and I had sent those same photos to the property owner as well after I received, after I saw, took them this morning, and, and I sent them to, um, the health inspectors as well. So we could, they could give you some information for tonight as to the status. And you also heard from the owner, um, about getting more dumpsters brought to the site.
Okay, thank you.
So that was the other thing.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, nothing else to read? Um, can, can you take us through your staff report, Michelle?
Yes, I will say, nothing else to read. You do have copies of all the peer review reports from the city peer reviewer. I wasn't going to read those into the record, but you do have copies of them. We'll get to them when we, uh, talk about them in this, this report. So this is the planning report and recommendation dated July 9th, 2025. I won't read it verbatim into the record, it's incorporated by reference into the record. So, um, giving you just a brief description of the property. So there are four buildings on the property, the self-storage facility building, which is known as 3436 Broadway. That's the four-story building in the back. 36-54 Broadway, which is a single-story building where the proposed Adult Day Health Center is proposed to occupy. And then you also have 60 Broadway, which is a single-story building used for the supermarket. And then 88 Broadway, which is a two-story building that's currently vacant, um, and proposed, to be proposed according to the owner for retail sales, but it's currently vacant. So you've heard about the subject of the petition, the plans. I will note there is a difference, um, between the square footage, the property, uh, property owner has provided and what's shown on the plans. We're using the square footage provided in the floor plan, which is 19,756, for all of this report references. Um, since if you approve a special permit tonight, it will be approved with those plans. So we want to be able to, um, have those incorporated in. So you did hear, uh, briefly about this other use, the educational use. So the existing storefronts being split into two new storefronts. One will be the Adult Day Health Center, the other will be the, um, use for this educational use. And as the petitioner stated, site plan approval was granted on June 24th, 2025, for that educational use. Um, you heard about the petition. These are the plans that, and the other information that was submitted, I won't read that, but it's all listed here for you, the different site plans, floor plans, spreadsheets with tenant information. Um, I listed everything that was submitted. You made sure, if you're looking at that spreadsheet, look at the most recent one, which you will be able to tell, because in the bottom right corner, it says revised, received, 7, 9, 25, and that's in red. So just make sure you're looking at the, the current, most current one. The owner had updated it a couple of times. Um, so that is the most current that was provided. Um, in terms of zoning, the property is classified as part of the highway business zoning district. In this district, the proposed Adult Day Health Center use is allowed by special permit. The proposed massage services and acupuncture by definition are classified as licensed massage therapy salon use. This use is expressly excluded from an Adult Day Health Center, may not be accessory to an Adult Day Health Center. That's per the definition in the zoning ordinance. That was what the chair was referencing earlier. The existing retail sales and services are allowed by right. The supermarket and restaurants are allowed by special permit. The self-storage facility is prohibited. It was, however, allowed by special permit under the prior ordinances. The restaurants, that, the two restaurants there were allowed by special permits granted by this board back in 2016. And the supermarket predates the ordinance, it's pre-existing non-conforming use. Giving you the breakdown here of current and proposed use of the property. Um, again, this special permit is concerning the storefront numbered 54 Broadway, Adult Day Health Center, um, 19,576. I'm not sure, um, if the, the other, the educational use, you can tell from this list, is also the same number storefront. Much sure if the city will, um, ask them to assign another number, or what will happen with that. But this is right now known as 54 Broadway. Director Butters to the south are single-family residential dwellings, multifamily dwellings, and a retail sales business, sell vehicles. To the west and north is a public park, South Broadway Park, and a school and athletic field, Malden Catholic. To the east, retail services, motor vehicle repair shops and a restaurant. To the east, on the other side of Broadway, are a multifamily residential dwelling, motor vehicle repair shop and restaurant, surrounding land uses a residential business and industrial. The residence A zoning district butts to the south, the residence B district to the west, and the industrial one district to the north. And actually, this is incorrect. So to the east are retail services, eh, retail services, which is the car wash. There's no longer a restaurant or motor vehicle repair shop. And the car wash is considered retail services under then-existing zoning. The subject property, this is just a history of how it was created, I won't get into that. But the property violates dimensional controls for front yard setback, one-side yard setback, predates the current ordinance, is considered pre-existing non-conforming. The proposal maintains the existing non-conformities, it creates no new violations of dimensional controls. There are four principal buildings on the property. That predates the prohibition of multiple principal buildings. The property is pre-existing non-conforming because of that as well. In terms of parking, loading, and screening requirements, um, the existing and proposed uses of the property require a total of 911 parking spaces and 14 loading spaces. Giving you the breakdown here, um, what the formula is for each type of use based on square footage, number parking spaces and loading. This does take into account, um, that the retail sales is to be proposed at 88 Broadway, so we use that four-per-thousand formula. If it ends up being something else, that number could change. That is actually vacant right now, that 88 Broadway building. So the site plan, again, based on my count and what I could see, depicts 770 parking spaces. As we heard from the petitioner or from the property owner, that may be a different number. So according to property owner, there are 792 parking spaces. So everything, um, that I, the rest of this analysis, I use the 770 number. Um, so some of this might change a little bit if there's more parking. Um, but what won't change is that the majority spaces are for cars. Many are larger spaces for rental trucks used by the self-storage facility located around the 34 Broadway building and the rear of the 3654 Broadway building. A total of 754 parking spaces are required for the existing uses, including that to be proposed retail use and the prior retail use of the subject premises, the 54 Broadway storefront. So the proposed Adult Day Health Center requires 235 parking spaces. That proposal increases the total parking for the property from 754 to 911. The proposal creates a deficiency of 141 spaces, or 16%. It could actually be less than that, as I said, if there is actually, if there are actually more than 770 parking spaces, the deficiency would be less than that. Because the new use is proposed to be added to a pre-existing non-conforming property, the new non-conformity may be considered by this board as part of the special permit. You may grant relief through the special permit. The city peer reviewer also provided an opinion regarding parking, um, which is below. After I received the markup plan, I tried to, um, and after my site visit, tried to address a couple of these issues. If you'd read the previous version of the staff report, I had said this information was missing. Um, once I received it, I tried to incorporate in, and so I can give you some sense of whether they comply or they don't. In terms of the parking layout, the majority of parking spaces are configured as head-on. The width of most parking aisles complies with the required minimum width for two-way traffic. There are some aisles on here that weren't labeled, so I can't tell whether they comply. In terms of driveways, the north plaza driveway off-Broadway. Broadway, so that's the one closest to the supermarket, complies with the width for two-way traffic. Widths of the other driveways was not provided. Landscaping, seventy-seven trees are required. That's one tree per ten parking spaces. According to property owner, there were seventy-one trees. Area is not paved, a landscape with mulch. In terms of snow storage, as we talked about before, it's, it's based on the type of parking space. More snow storage is required for a car parking space as opposed to a truck space. And the required location is abutting the parking area served, not in areas designated for parking spaces or areas planted with shrubs, ivy or trees. So a minimum of thirty thousand eight hundred square feet is required for the property based on seven hundred seventy car parking spaces. That number would increase if there were more parking spaces and/or they are truck parking spaces. Approximately fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-nine square feet of snow storage is provided in various areas, all of which are located in parking spaces. So that's on the plan that was handed out tonight. That's got the colorized highlighted areas on. The snow storage is in that light blue. Bicycle parking for all existing and proposed uses of the property, bicycle parking for twenty-two spaces is required. Bicycle parking for twelve is provided. The racks are in poor condition. And there's also a peer review recommendation regarding bicycle parking for the proposal that we'll get to. Loading, a total of fourteen loading spaces are required for the existing and proposed uses. There are two loading docks at the rear of thirty-six fifty-four Broadway, one on the side of sixty, the sixty Broadway building. Not sure if one of those loading docks is going to be eliminated because I believe that's where the ramp is going to be going. So when you look at this plan, that part that jogs in, that is the part where the proposed Adult Day Health Center is going. There's another plan as well that was in your package that might help you if you want to, need to be oriented. And this was provided by the owner and it lists, it looks like this, so it's got the legends of which the businesses are. So you can see where this business is going to be going between Crunch Fitness and Flaming Grow. And that part that juts out there is where the loading dock is now, if you compare it to that other plan. So according to the property owner, each store has its own loading door with a shared loading area in the rear. Dumpsters, the screening enclosures for most dumpsters are in need of repair. And we talked about the food waste and other debris that's outside the dumpsters right now. So that, we heard they're being repaired and that issue is being addressed. abutting residential uses on Newland Street is screened from the parking lot with privacy fencing. That's required, that the abutting residences be screened. Terms of traffic impact, the proposal required the filing of a traffic impact study per the board's rules and procedures. The city peer reviewed the petitioner's transportation impact study and follow-up responses. The peer review is described in the various correspondence, there are four dated February sixth, March tenth, April seventh, and April twenty-third, 2025. You have copies of those. They include the following recommended traffic and safety mitigation, one implementation of a traffic, of a transportation demand TDM program for employees, including elements described in the transportation impact study designated transportation, which are designated transportation coordinator to oversee transportation issues, including parking service, loading, refuse removal, providing orientation, employee orientation packets with information regarding public transportation options, implement employee ride mat, employee ride matching program for car van pooling, provide guaranteed ride home program. I don't know if this is a typo. Offer transit pass subsidy of at least fifty percent of the cost of an MBTA monthly link passed to employees that use the MBTA bus service to access the project site and register with the transportation coordinator, provide secure weather-protected bicycle parking for employees. The, this is, these are, this, that was specific to this petitioner, to the Adult Day Health Center, that they implemented transportation demand management program. The next few are specific to the plaza or more general. So two is update fire lane pavement markings along the front of the Broadway Plaza building that contains the tenant space with fire lane, no parking, pavement markings to meet the pavement marking standard of the fire code NFPA one. Right now, there's just some small letters there, but the attachment showed there's like a grid that they use with large lettering. That's the current standard, apparently. Three, reconstruct wheelchair ramps for crossing the South Broadway Plaza North and South driveways to meet ADA requirements. Four, explore the possibility of adding a stop sign at the North Plaza driveway. Five, explore the possibility of relocating the trash receptacle at the MBTA bus stop on Broadway north of the South Plaza driveway. And six, explore the feasibility of restriping existing crosswalks in the immediate area, the lease space with thermoplastic ladder patterns. Those are the crosswalks that cross from the sidewalk in front of the building over to the parking area. If you look at this colorized plan, you can see that they're located in each of the park sets apart, they connect the sidewalk to the set of parking immediately across, except for the ones that have the landscaping at the ends. So the one that's directly in front of this proposed business has a landscaping area. So I believe that's why there wasn't a recommendation to put a crosswalk there because you would be crossing people into the landscaping area, whereas the others are there crossing you into the parking area. So that's where the crosswalks are that are referenced. Regarding parking, the city peer reviewer provided the opinion that supports a reduction in the number parking spaces required for the Adult Day Health Center, reducing from the number of parking spaces required by city ordinance, given that clients will be transported to and from the site by shuttle buses. And that the parking requirements for the Adult Day Health Center should be determined based on the number of employees. So that was everything. Do you want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
So the findings you would need to make to rent a special permit are, one, that any creation or increase in violations of dimensional controls or parking requirements will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Two, that the traffic and traffic patterns generated by the proposed use will not adversely impact any of the surrounding streets or create a traffic or safety hazard. Three, that the proposed use will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Four, that the proposed use is not in conflict with surrounding land uses. And five, the proposed use is in the interest of the common good. So the recommendation, which was made prior to the public hearing and provided that the board makes those required findings, is that a special permit be granted subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, massage services or acupuncture shall not be provided by the Adult Day Health Center as per section twelve point thirty-two oh fifty of the ordinance. The proposed rooms labeled massage and acupuncture may be used for an allowed Adult Day Health Center activity. Three, property owner shall provide a site plan with all required information. I've added, including the required traffic and safety mitigation. And shall install and maintain all parking and loading, snow storage area, landscaping, dumpsters with screening enclosures, privacy screening of residences, bicycle parking. And I will add, again, traffic and safety mitigation as per plan. So the intent is they submit an updated plan that will have all that information on it and then that they will then install and maintain all of that. Four, immediately, and the safe, traffic and safety mitigation would be the other items that are in here that we're going to get to. Four, immediately upon issuance of the special permit, property owner shall remove all litter debris and trash from all areas of the site and implement a plan for daily trash litter management of the entire property. That was actually not directed towards the dumpsters. It was directed towards the other debris that's in different spots around the site. There was a lot, it was not a lot, but there were, there were sections of the parking lot that had debris and litter. So six, property owner shall update fire lane pavement markings along the front of the Broadway Plaza building that contains the tenant space with fire lane, no parking pavement markings to meet the pavement marking standard of the fire code NFPA one. Seven, property owner shall designate six parking spaces near the tenant space with signage as reserved for the use of the Adult Day Health Center for short term parking for shuttle vans. What I would also recommend adding is that, and I'm not sure if we should say fifteen, if it's going to be a maximum of fifteen, fifteen spaces at the rear of the property for long-term and overnight parking of the shuttle vans. So designate fifteen parking spaces at the rear of the building for long-term and overnight parking of the shuttle vans. I think it was Michelle. Oh, it was Risa, I'm sorry. It was Risa.
Yeah. Are you putting that as a day one condition, that quantity?
Um, I'm not sure. I, they had proposed the six at the front and based on what I heard, I thought fifteen
Right.
He said would be the max, but I don't know.
I think, as you were saying, and as you were weighing in, Risa, I was thinking maybe we should say up to fifteen spaces as needed.
Okay.
Then that, because if they only need two or three for the first year.
Okay.
They should be limited. And then that's why when I asked the owner's rep, did she see any problem with accommodating them as they grew? And it didn't seem to be.
Okay, so designate up to, so the second part of that would be designate up to fifteen spaces.
As needed.
Okay. Eight, any use of the fire lane for drop-off pickup activities by Adult Day Health Center is prohibited.
Now unfortunately about that, we don't have any control over the the children's portion because that's already been approved by the site plan review committee.
Well, truth be told, I don't think, nobody is supposed to park in the fire lane.
Right.
So you really actually don't even need to put in a condition because it's automatically required. I originally added it really as a, I don't want to say a reminder, but you don't actually need to have the condition in. Nobody's supposed to park in the fire lane. But initially, the traffic report suggested they would use pickup, drop-off at the front of the building on the curb. And that was flagged as an issue by the peer reviewer that that shouldn't be done, you know? And then it got, the idea was to put the parking across that they would use. So I don't know that you even need that condition in. And the childcare, the, the educational use can't park there either. Nobody should be parking in the fire lane. So if you want to eliminate that, you can. I mean,
No, let's leave it in.
We're not actually, you know.
Let's leave it in. Thank you. What's the next one?
I mean, it's by anybody. Nine, Adult Day Health Center shall implement a transportation demand program for employees, including designated transportation coordinator to oversee transportation issues, including parking service, loading and refuse removal, provision of employee orientation packets with info regarding public transportation options, employee ride matching program for car van pooling, guaranteed ride home program, offer transit pass subsidy of at least fifty percent of the cost of MBTA monthly link passed to employees that use MBTA bus services to access the site and register with transportation coordinator, provision to secure weather-protected bicycle parking for employees. So, and I forgot to raise this when we were talking about the bicycle parking. So twenty-two spaces are required. It's not clear whether this was intended to be something else. Weather-protected bicycle parking for employees is something other than, the twenty-two spaces are required for the whole plaza, for all the tenants of the plaza. So that's, you know, it's my understanding that's in addition to the required twenty-two.
Okay.
So I don't know if we, we, we should say that, you know, in addition to the required parking. Because, you know, they could have a room in the back where the employees can put their bikes or something. It's not open to the public. The twenty-two is supposed to be for users of the plaza and anybody.
Okay.
So, so in, I think we'll add that in addition to required twenty-two spaces. In addition to twenty-two spaces. What am I saying? In addition to twenty-two spaces required by ordinance, that's what I'm saying. So this is specific for their employees.
Yes.
Okay. Ten, property owner shall reconstruct wheelchair ramps for crossing the South Broadway Plaza North and South driveways to meet ADA requirements. I would add, subject to city approval. Because they will have to, as the property owner stated, need to coordinate. If the city doesn't approve that, they won't be able to do it.
Right.
I think city approval covers everything, right?
Yep.
Property owner shall install a stop sign and mark stop line for motorists exiting the North Plaza driveway. So one other thing we didn't really talk about, so the North Plaza driveway is located on their property. That's the driveway that's near the supermarket. The other driveway called the South Plaza driveway is actually a portion of City Paper Street. So this is specific to installing this on their property, okay? It wouldn't be, the, the stop sign is going to get installed on their property with the line.
Yep.
So they don't need city approval to do that. Anything with this other driveway, though, they would need city approval. Okay? So that's why the wheelchair ramps need city approval. That's my understanding of this.
Right, okay.
Okay. Twelve, property owner shall coordinate with city and MBTA to relocate the trash receptacle at the MBTA bus stop on Broadway just north of the South Plaza driveway to a location outside of the site triangle area for motors exiting the South Plaza driveway. So that's, again, that's not on their property. At least I don't think it's on their property. I think it's right outside their property. The property line runs like right down that landscaped area. So I, I think this should cover it, that they'll coordinate with the city and MBTA. So if neither the city or MBTA approves it, or, you So, if neither the city or MBTA approves it, or, you know, it won't happen.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay.
Thirteen, property owner shall restrip the four existing crosswalks located on-site in front of the 3654 Broadway building that connect to the parking lot with thermoplastic ladder pattern. Again, those are the four on their property that cross that travel lane. I would also recommend fourteen, based on the property owner's representation, that they would be willing to do this, that the property owner install flashing pedestrian crossing sign, and I don't know if it's sign or signs, in front, in the travel lane in front of the premises. So, I don't know if that's one of those portable blinking signs, you know, it's like on a...
Yep. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
So, I think maybe, I think one sign, again, there's not really a place to put a crosswalk that, either they're going to have to go down to cross in front of Dollar Tree, or walk back up and cross in front of Crunch Fitness. So, this would maybe create a, you know.
Okay.
Signal. So, I guess just install flashing pedestrian crossing sign in travel lane in front of premises. Now, I don't know if they're actually installing it in the ground, or it's like a portable Do you care?
Well, did you have some, Ken? Okay. Thank you, Ken. Yes, miss?
Just wanted to clarify on that. We are proposing installed in the ground but not flashing one of those fluorescent signs. They go in the roadway, so they'd be in the dividing line between the two lanes of traffic that are going this way, and it's installed in the roadway there, so it breaks up the two travel lanes. We're proposing installing fluorescent signs there, not flashing ones.
Okay, fluorescent.
Yep.
And is it more than one sign?
Yes, we'd be happy to do them at all the crossings for the tenant.
Okay. So, how many crossings are there, though?
Two.
Two, okay. Install pedestrian crossing signs, so you want to specify two?
Yes, and we'll put that on the plan that we're going to...
Okay, in travel lane in front of premises. So, this is just going to go in front of their, their business?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I would also recommend off-site fifteen, off-site snow removal program shall be used as necessary. Now, I'm saying that, I don't know when it's necessary, I, I might suggest it's necessary right now, I don't, I think they're already short on the parking, and to use spaces for that, I'm not sure that's something we want to, you know, set a precedent for allowing. So, in the past, when there hasn't been snow removal on-site, you have said you have to remove it off-site. I don't know if that's something you want to consider. It's, to say it's, shall be used as necessary, that's not going to be our decision, it's going to be their decision, so if they decide they're not going to do it.
And I think what's going to happen is when their customers can't park, they're going to bring in people to remove it.
Okay, so then I guess you don't need that condition, so I would...
Did you have anything else, Michelle?
No.
Because Risa has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, there's no condition related to the required number of trees, I was wondering if that was some purpose?
Well, the required number of trees, again, if there were 770 parking spaces, would be 77. They stated that they had 71. I did try to count when I was out there, but I lost count. So, they're saying on their plan, this is on the color plan, it says there are 71 trees. Technically, if there's 79, 792 spaces, there should be 79 trees, because it's one for every 10. It's up to, if you want to add something to that, you could add it to three, condition three, which was they were providing the site plan with the required information, and install and maintain parking, loading, snow storage area. You could say landscaping and all required trees, you could say that.
Do you know if the...
I just don't know how many that number is, because I don't know how many parking spaces there are, so.
Maybe once they determine, once they restripe, they can report how many, and often provide one per 10. Do you know if the city tree program applies to commercial property?
I don't know. I don't know that. But yeah, if you say required trees, then that's, you're not... So, you're not, you're just saying snow storage area, but you're not saying required snow storage area. So, you're not telling them they have to have what's required on the plan, but if you say required trees, that's telling, you know, that they have to have the, the number. And on that note, so I guess we should say required landscaping, required trees, dumpsters with required enclosures, privacy fencing of residences, and required bicycle parking. So that there's no question that you're granting any relief on them not providing what's required, since the plans don't show everything that's required, so I would amend that, so.
Okay, does that satisfy your research?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Michelle on the amended conditions? Okay, if there's no other questions, give me one second here. Ken Intenucci.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit with the modified conditions as read.
Okay, Ken's made a motion to approve the special permit with the modified conditions. Is there a second? Pat Hayes.
I'll second.
Michelle, whenever you're ready.
Ken Intenucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Chawada Chigavasalasi?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Maria Schroeder?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Rajverma?
Yes.
Chaka Ova?
Yes, the petition's been granted with conditions. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community preservation committee update. Ron, if you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I actually missed our last month's meeting, so I don't have an update on June specifically, but I do have an update on St. Paul's Church. So, in April, it went in front of the city council, and they had a meeting and deliberate, and that project did get approved, so it's moving forward. So, they are getting some quotes on refinishing the stained glass, some moisture control within the building, and reappointing some stonework. So, once they lock in a contractor and start moving forward, I'll update the committee on that. And then, once I have the June meeting minutes, I'll update us next month for other projects.
Very good.
That's it for now.
Thank you, sir. Michelle, do you have anything for open space or master plan? Thank you. I don't think we have any other old business. The next meeting, Michelle, can you give us an update on the status of the next meeting at the moment?
At the moment? At the moment, there is no meeting scheduled. There are no petitions that have been filed and/or are ready for carrying.
And when will we know that for sure? Two weeks?
No. Who would know? Let me just check up the book. So, your next meeting would be the 13th, and so, first publication would need to be the 30th, so when the advocate, it would need to be the 25th, which would mean, anything should already be in and be filed, and we should be already quote processing it, but technically, the deadline would be sometime next week, that would be the absolute cutoff, so, but to my knowledge, there's nothing in the pipeline or coming in the pipeline. I mean, there's a few things that are, we've been working, you know, with different petitioners on, but nothing, nothing's been filed. One actually at this plaza, another tenant.
Okay.
So, but they're, they're...
If you, if you could...
...ways off, yeah.
If you could let us know when the date passes?
Yes, I will.
So that folks know as soon as possible?
I will.
And if anyone can't make it, let Michelle know right away?
Yes.
So that we can plan accordingly?
Yeah, I'll plan to let you know that, not next week, but the week after. That will be definitive. But as of right now, I don't, I don't, there's nothing in, and nothing that I'm aware of that's going to be coming in.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make the motion, please.
Diane Chuha, seconded. Risa Gray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy the rest of the summer, everyone.